I like that. Very good, Brian.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. Time being seven o'clock or shortly thereafter, I'll call the April 30th, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV, again, on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who miss the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using Zoom webinar ID 817-9580-9431, and then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the webinar ID is 817-9580-9431, and then hit the pound sign. Okay. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, the participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Councilor Delarco is a little under the weather this evening, so he will not be in attendance. We have a couple of upcoming community events. We're excited to officially announce the launch of the Franklin Art Pharmacy Program beginning tomorrow, May 1st, 2025. Art Pharmacy is a creative well-being initiative launched by the town of Franklin, grounded in the belief that the art can be a powerful path to healing. Backed by opioid settlement funding, this visionary program is led by the town administration in partnership with local cultural organizations prescribing partners and community leaders. For more information, head to the Art Pharmacy page on the town website. The Franklin Department of Arts Culture and the Creative Economy is holding a request for proposal, better known as an RFP, for artists to create artwork for Franklin's first public art micro gallery. The RFP is currently open with a deadline of tomorrow, May 1st, 2025. For more information, head to the RFP Micro Galleries page on the town website. Okay. Further announcements from the chair, School Committee Chair Dave Callahan?
Hey, everybody. Dave Callahan from the Franklin School Committee. Proud to announce we finally didn't have a five-hour meeting last night. It was terrific. So we have a couple of big things. The first one, we voted to, there was a lot of changes going on at the elementary school report cards, and so incredible work that was going on from the central office, superintendent, his staff, our teachers, literacy specialists, really kind of creating a more streamlined report card for the families and really kind of also aligning to the portrait of a graduate. We also had the school committee voted on a letter of support to our legislative leaders for supporting public access, Franklin TV, something I think very similar to the town council had done just a few months ago. We had Franklin TV come present to school committee back in January, and during that presentation, they really kind of talked about as more and more folks start to get rid of cable, they're seeing a decline in revenue. But there are some bills in the House and the Senate that look to apply that similar surcharge from cable over onto digital media like Netflix help kind of supplement that because Franklin TV, all public access as well, but is so important. You know, as we see right here with these meetings, all of our meetings are be able to be watched, livestream, watched back. There are so many in the schools, sports events, concerts, shows, high school graduations for the grandparents that aren't able to kind of come on down, they can still watch and see the grandkids go across the graduation stage. So Franklin TV is just so important, and we were able to kind of draft a letter to send on out, offering up our support unanimously for the school committee. And we also, as all the departments are kind of going through this week, it's FinCom is going through all of their budgets, and on Monday Superintendent Giacchia presented the budget, I think he said for the 14th time, to the town of Franklin. And again, for folks that have any questions about the budget, thanks to Franklin TV, you can watch probably about like 30 hours of his presentations over the past couple of years. But some great questions that were asked, especially right out of the gate, Chairman George Conley kind of spoke and said, all right, well, this budget that we're looking at assumes the structural deficit is to be solved, and it's correct because otherwise without that, it's kind of been broadcast out, the schools may have to find $2 million worth of cuts. And already through this, you know, once in a generation reorganization that's going on, from consolidating down to 10 schools to seven, through a number of consolidations, inefficiencies, it's providing a better educational experience for our kiddos moving forward. It also happens to be saving the taxpayers about $3.1 million annually. And that's already savings baked into the budget today. If the structural deficit is not to be solved, now we're adding, you know, essentially $2 million, and there's just no fat to be trimmed from this budget. It's a great budget. The budget itself, as Lucas had titled it, Superintendent, is laying a future for success, and it's really true. And I'm really excited about it. It was great to be able to present to FinCom. Can't wait before it's get in front of you guys later on in May. But although we got our next meeting, I think, May 13th. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dave. Further announcements from the chair, Town Clerk Nancy D'Nello, 30 seconds or less. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
This feels good.
Okay, nice and comfy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. I'm Nancy D'Nello, your Town Clerk. I'm here for an update on the special election to be held on Tuesday, June 3rd, at the Franklin High School from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I have received the ballots. They came in. The permanent absentees and the vote by mail requests are all sent out. They all went out yesterday, so you'll probably have them if you requested them in your mailbox tomorrow. This is a reminder to all registered voters, you will not automatically be mailed out a ballot. You must request it. You must request it by completing the vote by mail application. Turnaround time for the request and then the ballot to be mailed out, same day. So request a ballot by filling out the application. You can even email me the application, and it'll go out the same day. I am respectfully requesting that our ballots be dropped off to one of our ballot drop boxes located here at the town hall. There are two. There is one just beyond the drive-up, and then there is one right to the left of the building as you're entering the walkway. And that drops right into my office. We will be hosting in-person early voting, beginning on May 16th through May 30th. We're closed on Memorial Day, May 26th, but we'll be here on Saturday, May 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That is also the last day to register to vote, okay? Now, the following is how I am notifying the voters of Franklin of the election. If anybody has any other ideas, I welcome them. The election, it's posted on the main page of the town website, as well as every department's page. Signs have been placed at every major intersection in town. I'm sure you probably saw two or three as you're driving to the municipal building, along with the electronic info boards there at the fire station and also Horace Mann. The banners will be up at the bridge by the Rome as well. Council just signed my warrant, so our constable, Dan McHale, will be picking the specimen ballots to post at all of the grocery stores, as well as the post office, the library, the senior center, and the convenience stores. I'll be making a robo-call. Probably not as interesting as Brutus is, but I will be making a robo-call, as well as robo-email. You'll probably be sick of my voice. They will start on May 7th, and I'm going to try and get them out every couple of days. I've gone to every senior living facility and posted the hours for in-person early voting, and I've also left vote by mail applications with the activities directors. We did a mailing of postcards to every household notifying them of the special election, and to call us with any questions they may have or to request a vote by mail application. Been in contact with Steve Sherlock and Alan Earls with all the information as well. Steve and I will be sitting for an interview next week, Steve?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next week, okay. The town has updated our social media account, and we will be posting constantly. I plan on going to the fitness centers and to the YMCA to post the hours for in-person early voting and other information about the election. Now, I have a special request of Councillor Frangillo. What do you think about, well, could we use your influence on maybe posting in-person early voting hours on the Gator Bus, right?
Let me ask you.
So I think I've pretty much hit everything, but again, I welcome any suggestions. Call me. I'm always in the office. My door is always open. If you have any questions, concerns, please reach out to me. That's the way to do it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. The town council may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Nothing herein shall prevent the town administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during citizens' comments. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, Mr. Sherlock? Please name and address.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia Drive, Community Information Director, Franklin Matters, Franklin News, Franklin Radio. Three PSAs. Horace Mann's birthday is Sunday, and I believe the Historical Museum will be having a birthday cake. Earlier in the morning, Councillor Frangillo and I will be doing another Jane's Walk, starting at 10 o'clock in the depot, so it'd be good to get some exercise, leisurely walk around downtown, discuss some zoning and housing issues before getting that piece of cake at the Historical Museum. And Memorial Day Parade has changed its route. If you haven't heard, there are changes coming to the route. The details are available through Allen's page, my page, senior center, Veterans Office. I also had a chance to meet with Dick Heinz from the American Legion, Scott Caruthers from the VFW. There's an audio also available beyond the radio on Friday, talking through the changes and the reasons how to and why they did that. Basically, the parade will come up Union Street on one side of the town common, come into downtown, and come back to the town common. So be at the common, you can get to see the parade twice. More details, I want to take the time to do, but there are details available, and they'll be shared certainly between now and then. But listen to the interview, and you can get the details that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Please, name and address, please.
It's not me. Hi, Jenna Cohen, 14 Elm Street. It's good to see all of you. As was already mentioned this evening, we have a very important special ballot election coming up on June 3rd. As people likely know, One Franklin has been working extensively over the past months to appreciate and understand the financial challenges facing the town across every single department, schools, police, fire, library, DPW, and senior center. These conversations held ahead of the town council vote to hold a special election confirmed the importance of all of Franklin coming together to preserve our public services, public safety, and public schools. As department heads and others have shared at the listening sessions, without a successful override, many services and programs are at risk that will impact neighbors, all of our neighbors, across town in different ways. In the coming weeks, we'll be hosting conversations, standing out and canvassing to spread the word about the vote on June 3rd. If you're interested, curious, have questions, have concerns, please reach out. Social media only goes so far. You can do so via email, via Facebook, and you can join us at Franklin TV on Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00, as we kick off with a lot of energy and enthusiasm to support our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? I don't see anybody. Do you, Amy? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from April 16th, 2025.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, proclamations and recognitions. We have a few this evening. First is a promotion in the Police Department Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Yes, we have two promotions that we'd like to recognize. Wanted to share with you and everybody else in town. So if you're good with that, we'll get going. John Godino.
Good thing he takes direction well.
Oh, he can give it well, too. He's a sergeant now. So there's a promotion from a patrol officer to sergeant. This is John Godino. John started his career in law enforcement in 2015, working as a dispatcher, special police officer for the towns of Millicent, Medfield. 2017, John was hired as a patrol officer with the Medfield Police Department and graduated from the Municipal Police Training Committee's full-time police academy in Redding. In 2019, John joined the Franklin Police Department. He is currently enrolled in the Van Loon School at Endicott College in pursuit of his bachelor's degree. And prior to pursuing his career in law enforcement, John served proudly with the United States Marine Corps Reserve from 2011 through 2015. For the past five-plus years, John has been a patrol officer with the Operations Division, where he served as a field training officer, responsible for training new officers who join the department through lateral transfer or graduation from the police academy. John is a member of the FPD Training Team and is a certified instructor in de-escalation tactics, patrol procedures, and active shooter. John is a member of the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, also known as METRELEC, Special Tactics and Response Division, where he serves as a member of the Crisis Negotiations Team. The highly-trained, versatile crisis negotiation team is responsible for negotiating a safe resolution to critical incidents involving barricaded suicidal persons, armed offenders, and hostage situations that may occur throughout the METRELEC membership consisting of 49 Massachusetts communities. Since 2021, John has been a contract employee for the Municipal Police Training Committee, has a certified instructor for recruit officer training at the academy. John provides instruction in active shooter response, building searches, motor vehicle stops, investigations, communication skills, de-escalation, and health and wellness. It gives me great pleasure to promote John Godino to the rank of sergeant.
I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand, John, and repeat after me. I, John Godino.
Aye, John Godino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To faithfully execute the duties.
To faithfully execute the duties.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
For the town of Franklin.
For the town of Franklin.
With respect.
With respect.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And excellence.
And excellence.
And to uphold the mission of the department.
And to uphold the mission of the department.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Massachusetts.
The State of Massachusetts.
And the laws and ordinances of the town of Franklin.
And the laws and ordinances of the town of Franklin.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'm a hugger.
Now I'd like to invite John's wife, Barbara, to come up and officially pin him.
Okay, have one more.
One more, sir, yes. Tara? This is Tara Lagoa. She's been promoted to Detective Court Prosecutor. I'm just going to give you a little idea what the court prosecutor does. It's not as infamous as a detective on television, so a lot of people don't know what it is. The court prosecutor is a very important position in any law enforcement agency. Assigned to the specialized services division, the court prosecutor is responsible for the administration of all district, superior, and juvenile criminal court cases, working directly with the assistant district attorneys assigned to the court on a daily basis, ensuring that the resolution of criminal cases is in the best interest of the town of Franklin and the victims of crime. The position is also responsible for overseeing and administering the department's evidence room, and serves as a detective assisting the division with follow-up in major crime cases when time allows. After a thorough vetting process of all applicants for the position, the department is pleased to announce that it has selected Officer Tara Lagoa as its new Detective Court Prosecutor. Tara has been employed in the law enforcement field for over 22 years. She started her career in 2003, working for the Westport Police Department as both a 911 dispatcher and a part-time reserve police officer. 2008, she accepted a full-time police officer position with the Westport PD and attended the MPTC Plymouth Police Academy. For the next eight years, she served with the Patrol Division, organized the Police Explorer Program, and was a school resource officer. In 2016, the Franklin Police Department was fortunate to hire Tara, an experienced and well-trained police officer. At the time, Tara was the only female police officer in our department of 46 one officers. For the past eight-plus years, Tara has been assigned to the Patrol Operations Division, serving as a field training officer, sexual assault investigator, and a rape-aggressive defense instructor. Tara is also a member of the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council's Critical Incident Stress Management Team, also known as the P S Support Unit. The P S Support Unit responds to critical incidents and provides support to METRELEC member agencies and their personnel. Unit members are certified to conduct diffusing and debriefings with agency personnel after a department has experienced a critical incident. Additionally, unit members can provide one-on-one service or act as a referral specialist outlining options to personnel. Tara has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Bristol Community College and is currently attending Bridgewater State University in pursuit of her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Gives me great pleasure to introduce our new court prosecutor, Detective Tara Lagoa.
Tara, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tara Lagoa. Do solemnly swear. To faithfully execute the duties.
To faithfully execute the duties.
As a Detective Court Prosecutor.
As a Detective Court Prosecutor.
For the town of Franklin.
For the town of Franklin.
With respect.
With respect.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And excellence.
And excellence.
And to uphold the mission of the department.
And to uphold the mission of the department.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Massachusetts.
The State of Massachusetts.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the town of Franklin.
Town of Franklin.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to invite Tara's sister, Taylor, up. Now I'd like to invite Tara's sister, Taylor, up.
Sure, absolutely.
In the last eight-plus years, almost nine coming up in July, the department's hired over 40-plus new police officers due to attrition and additions. We've had over a dozen promotions, and every single time, the town clerk, Nancy, has always been there, always accepted our request for her to come. I know she comes sometimes to talk, but other times I know she probably has no business.
Most of the time.
She has no business, but she comes on a Wednesday evening to basically be with us to do this and share this with everybody. So I just wanted to thank Nancy. And we'll see you next week.
Thanks, Gina. Look forward to it, Chief.
Thank you, anybody, next week?
Okay. Next, we have a proclamation, and we're fortunate to have the Franklin High School Theater Group with us this evening. And I'd ask them to come forward and just kind of circle around in front of the door facing this way, and I'd ask Counselor Jones to read the proclamation. They afraid of you, Glenn, they're backing away.
They know you.
First of all, folks, just to let you know, I'm very familiar with this group. Hopefully, you are familiar with this group. This is the Franklin High School Theater Company, who, most of you, what grade are you in? 10th? 11th?
Senior.
11th?
Senior.
11th.
Oh, I'm the adult.
You're the adult.
I never know. I'm like...
So if we call you a senior, you're a senior. All of these folks working together collectively through some of what is, for all intents and purposes, financial difficulties or challenges that we had last year. Our theater teacher had to step down due to financial difficulties last year, and these folks took it upon themselves to step up and not only get to the semifinals, but make it to the finals this year. And I have a proclamation for you folks. I'm going to read it to you right now. The town of Franklin, a proclamation honoring the Franklin High School Theater Company on being selected as a finalist at the 2025 Massachusetts High School Drama Festival. Whereas the Massachusetts High School Drama Festival is a prestigious and highly competitive annual event for high school theater companies hosted by the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, or the METG. In 2025, for the first time in their history, the Franklin High School Theater Company advanced past both the preliminary and semifinal rounds to compete in the state finals. And whereas throughout the 2025 festival, the Franklin High School Theater Company's collective performance of "The Yellow Boat" by David Sarr showcased the remarkable talent of these young actors. They received glowing feedback from the judges and earned several awards throughout the festival, including seven Excellence of Acting Awards, two Excellence in Movement and Acting Awards, nine Excellence in Technical Theater Awards. They were one of four winners of the March 1st preliminary round, one of two winners of the March 15 semifinals, and out of the 88 schools that entered the competition, the Franklin High School Theater Company was one of only 15 finalists that were selected to compete at the state finals. And whereas the success achieved by the Franklin High School Theater Company during the 2025 Massachusetts Drama Festival was earned through a lot of hard work, very long days and nights, we have to put nights in here, too, the incredible dedication and talent of the students who crafted this entire show from set, sound, lighting, design, to the award-winning performances on the stage, which I personally witnessed firsthand. Now therefore be it known that the Franklin High School Theater Group is recognized with pride by the town council, the town of Franklin, and congratulated on being selected as a finalist to the 2025 Massachusetts High School Drama Festival. Signed, Thomas T. Mercer, Chairman, Franklin Town Council.
I went to Franklin High School, and the theater program, yeah, I'll just say, the theater program changed my life, and these kids are my why. I would do it a million times over for them, and I hope that this program continues to exist so that they may flourish and learn as wonderful artists that they are. So thank you, thank you.
Do we have a show picked out for next year? Have you already thought about it?
Next year is still up in the air, so I hope we get to pick a show!
Yes.
In the meantime, you can come see Urantown, June 13th through June 14th.
Hey! It's musical!
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Next, we have a proclamation for our longtime Director of Department of Planning and Community Development Departments, Brian Tabaner. Brian, if you'd please come forward. And before I present the proclamation, I know Lisa Piany, Director of the Franklin Downtown Partnership, had a few words she'd like to say.
Lisa Piano with the Franklin Downtown Partnership. There we are, Brian. Brian, on behalf of myself and the Franklin Downtown Partnership's Board of Directors, I would like to extend our heartfelt thanks for your many years of service on the board and your unwavering dedication to the town of Franklin. Your commitment particularly to our downtown center has made a lasting and meaningful impact on our community. It has been a true pleasure working with you for nearly 18 years. Sorry. Can't believe it's been 18 years. I can say with confidence that both personally and on behalf of our Board of Directors that you will be deeply missed. Your involvement in the partnership has played a vital role in our growth from a small group of members to a thriving organization with close to 300 members. Your leadership and support in coordinating our two signature events have been instrumental to our continued success. As you step into retirement, we wish you all the very best. You, my friend, truly deserve it. Today, we celebrate not only your retirement, but also your many contributions and the legacy you leave behind in Franklin. Thank you so much.
Let me take a couple of minutes. Brian, certainly thank you for your many years of service to the town. I have here a proclamation. A proclamation honoring Brian Tabaner on the occasion of his retirement as the Director of Planning and Community Development for the town of Franklin. Whereas Brian Tabaner began his employment with the town of Franklin in November of 2007, bringing his extensive knowledge and experience. Since joining the Franklin team 17 years ago, he has been an outstanding community planning director overseeing all planning and community development work for the town of Franklin. And whereas the depth of Brian's skill and knowledge, combined with his unwavering dedication to the community, has led to a tremendously successful tenure with the town. While impossible to quantify his cumulative impacts and achievements, some notable accomplishments under Brian's leadership include the completion of the approval of the 2013 and 2024 Townwide Master Plans, the 2022 Affordable Housing Plan, the many hazard mitigation plans, and the three open space and recreation plans, the execution of the Franklin For All Downtown Rezoning Project, the establishment and certification of the Franklin Cultural District, 17 years of volunteer service as a member of the Downtown Partnership Board, through which he played a key role in the creation of the annual Strawberry Stroll and Harvest Festival, the approval of countless zoning bylaw amendments, numerous grant awards, and the project that many refer to as his baby, the 21 Grove Street Redevelopment Project known as New Style.
Yes.
And whereas throughout the past 17 years, Brian has worked tirelessly to incentivize business relocation to Franklin and maximize housing opportunities for all in Franklin. His efforts have opened many doors for growth and progress and will continue to benefit the community for years to come. And whereas, after a long and successful career, Brian Tabaner is retiring from the town of Franklin on May 31st, 2025. He has been a respected colleague and dear friend to many. The town of Franklin is grateful to Brian for his countless contributions and his dedicated leadership, and wishes him the very best in his well-deserved retirement. Now therefore be it known that Brian Tabaner is hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the town of Franklin for 17 years of dedicated service as the Director of Planning and Community Development, and congratulated on his retirement. Signed, Thomas D. Mercer, Chairman, Franklin Town Council.
I didn't even have to put in 20 years to get this. I mean, come on. Somebody asked me just a few days ago, what do you do? And I said, planning, community development director of town. They said, anybody can do planning. And I said, you're right. So just for record, anybody can do planning. But this is actually a good description of a planning, community, oh, correct, it does. And also, of course, you know, the assistance your department gives to all the different committees and commissions and boards, that's a huge part of what we do. It's half, I think it's basically half the top department's job, really, to take care of the other organizations, if you will. But the one thing that is interesting about, my title is Planning and Community Development. Community is the most important word in there. I think of a community in two big categories, one being the place that we are, the infrastructure, open space, the great place we are, the town facilities. But the other half is, the other half of the community is people. And this town, you have it in both ways. Any other community can beat Franklin in its infrastructure and the community itself, but just as important and more so is the actual people here.
We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups, so, and then we'll get right back to business. So then we'll get right back to business. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures with Brian and with the theater groups. So then we'll get right back to business. Thank you. We're going to take a short, three-minute break, just to take a couple of pictures
Social Restaurant Tavern. Close in the corner.
Good luck.
Any other councilors? Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you. It's wonderful to hear that we have local residents who are taking the opportunity to establish a local business here in town. It makes me proud to have you guys step up and do this. I know you've got a few steps to take to get there. I'm sure things will work out well. And I know we, as the council, living so close to the business, will probably take the opportunity to stop in and check out the fairs that you may have. Just a couple of quick questions. One is, obviously, with your experience, everyone's going to be tip-trained, correct? All right. And one of the questions I have is if you're aware of the local ordinance, I've had to remind other businesses in town that we have a bylaw in place that sustenance, food of sustenance, needs to be served up until closing. Can't close two hours, you can't stop serving food two hours ahead and keep serving alcohol until midnight. Mainly, and again, I'm so passionate about that simply because I've always felt that if, having grown up in the city myself and seen people who've gone, eaten nothing but peanuts and popcorn after nine o'clock, it's not usually a good outcome. So just so that you're aware of that. And we hope, and I think what time did you want them open to?
Like I said, I was just gonna say, tell them the real reason why.
At least pass our council meetings. Now, I can't promise what time it's gonna end because sometimes we go up to midnight. But maybe if you keep the lights on.
Go ahead, Councilor Jones.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we love helping Franklin residents. I'm glad you've been here as long as you have. And I was just thinking, the best part of this is you have, what, a seven-minute commute to get home? I mean, your whole life, you had two hours a day, and this is gonna be heavy. So I'm really happy for you there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Councilor Cormier-Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. More of a comment than a question for you two. But first of all, thank you for stepping up and taking over this space. And I look at the menu here and I'm excited by it already. I think you'll see me and the family there a lot because it's a very approachable, kid-friendly, budget-friendly menu. So that's awesome. I love that you're thinking about the space, you know, for community gatherings, for Mother's Day, for parties. There is a need for that. But the most important thing that I heard you say was your commitment to community. So I really, really, really respect that a great deal. Our youth groups and sports teams and theater groups, like, they need more businesses to step up and help. So thank you for that early commitment and best wishes with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. Any other councilors? Councilor Plegry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to welcome you. And I think it's great that you're gonna be our neighbor here next door. And as the rest of them have said, we look forward to probably stopping in after a meeting.
Yeah, can tell.
And I hope that you'll look into hiring some of the people from Franklin, too. Your waiters, waitresses, and I don't know about your cooks unless you have everything just all set. But good luck with getting everything together. And when do you think we're gonna be able to see you next door?
That'll be determined somewhat on the approval approvals. The final liquor license approval creates contingencies with taking occupancy and moving forward with a lot of the transactions. It's a very involved process, particularly with this. We're now looking to make extreme changes with the layout. I think it's gonna be decor and
Cosmetic, mostly.
Cosmetic, conceptual changes. So we are looking to get open as quickly as possible.
And with it staying amongst us, staying like that, you shouldn't have any problems then, you know, within the building. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Plegry. Any other councilors? Okay, I will.
I was gonna say, we can always put a lantern in the window.
One is by land, two is by sea. Okay, I will declare the public hearing on the transfer of the Section 12 Restaurant Common Victular License and approval of Dolores Costa as manager closed. And we will now go directly to license transaction and transaction, transfer of Section 12 Restaurant Common Victular All Alcohol License and approval of Dolores Costa as the manager. Franklin Hospitality Group LLC doing business as the Tavern on Central located at 391 East Central Street. Franklin Clerk will read the transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a license transaction. Transfer of Common Victular's Section 12 Restaurant All Alcoholic Beverages License for Franklin Hospitality Group LLC doing business as the Tavern on Central located at 391 East Central Street, number five, Franklin, Mass. 020 through 8. Franklin Hospitality Group LLC doing business as the Tavern on Central is seeking approval for a transfer of the Section 12 Restaurant All Alcoholic Beverage License and to approve the manager, Dolores Costa. Issuance of license will be withheld until all departments have signed off on this application. Motion to approve the request by the Franklin Hospitality Group LLC doing business as the Tavern on Central for a transfer of Section 12 Restaurant All Alcoholic Beverage License and to approve Dolores Costa as the manager.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move right into legislation for action. The first is Resolution 25-18, June 3, 2025. Election early in mail-in voting. Clerk will read the resolution.
This is...
25-18.
25-18.
Really?
No. Maybe 25-29 or 25-30.
Ah, sorry. Sorry. We already did that one. We did that one at the last meeting. Okay, so we go to Resolution 25-29. Transfer of care, custody, management, and control of town-owned property containing the building known as Gerald Murdoch Parmenter Elementary School from the Franklin School Committee to the Franklin Town Council for municipal purposes. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-29. Transfer of care, custody, management, and control of town-owned property containing the building known as Gerald Murdoch Parmenter Elementary School from the Franklin School Committee to the Franklin Town Council for municipal purposes. Whereas the town owns improved property containing a building known as the Gerald Murdoch Parmenter Elementary School located at the southwesterly corner of the intersection of Washington and King Streets and shown on Franklin Assessment Map 297 at parcel 50. Title reference Norfolk County Registry of Deeds book 2968, page 219. Wherein after known as the property for the school purpose, for school purposes. And whereas property was gifted by, to town, by Ernest B. Parmenter and Maude A. Parmenter for the construction of an elementary school to be named in memory of their son Gerald Murdoch Parmenter and a Franklin resident who's distinguished himself during World War II. And whereas General Act Chapter 40, Section 15A, sets out the procedure to be followed when town-owned property is no longer needed for a specific municipal purpose for which it is held. And whereas the Franklin School Committee has determined that the property is no longer needed for school purposes and as provided in said statute, was given written notice of its determination to the Franklin Town Council by memorandum dated January 15, 2025, a true copy of which is attached heretofore as exhibit one. Now therefore be resolved that the Franklin Town Council, acting by and through its town council, hereby transfers the care, custody, management, and control of property from the Franklin School Committee to the Franklin Town Council for municipal purposes as provided in General Act Chapter 40, Section 15A, declares that the property shall henceforth be formally named and known as the Gerald Murdoch Parmenter Memorial Complex and directs that a true copy of this resolution be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-29.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Jamie?
Through you. I know you'll probably have some comments, Mr. Chairman, and the family is here. But really quickly, for the folks at home and the record, the school committee did, as part of their redistricting process, go through the proper state legal channels to essentially dispose of, through the disposition process, of the 20-acre-plus-minus site that the Parmenter School is on, as well as the baseball field. Most people don't know, deep in the woods also includes some land in there. And so this is the official recording that the town attorney will then, if approved tonight, take to the registry to record the parcel under the Town of Franklin. And as the memo states right here, and as the resolution just was stated by Councilor Jones, the entire complex, the 20 acres or so, would be in the memory of Mr. Parmenter, which was obviously part of the gift to the town. So any structures or any, just for the record, so people understand, the town council, this body has essentially unilateral control and jurisdiction over any naming rights of any public property in the community. And so I think, as we've kind of committed to, if there are any structures that are on the parcel in the future, the council could certainly name those buildings as well in memory of the Parmenter name or anything else that the council sees fit. That, in lieu of that, I think the most important piece is the fact that the site that was donated by the family, the entire site, with this vote tonight, would then make sure that that name is left in their memory in perpetuity. And as the deed says, and as Councilor Jones read, would be in memory of Mr. Parmenter right there on the complex. So that is a background. And I have to note, we put all the deed in the packet so people have all the information. And just as a trivia question, in case anybody around town wants to ask it, how much did the school cost in around 1950 to build the Parmenter School? You can have this as a trivia. $304,000. $304,000. Seventy-five years ago, it cost to build that school. Town clearly got its money's worth. Today, it would be $304 million, which is unbelievable to read some of the old press clippings that we dug up and that were lingering around. It's just amazing. So that's, happy to answer any questions. And the town attorney will be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Jamie. And just a couple of comments so that everybody understands. As we move forward with this, you know, we hope to have a formal presentation or banner-cutting or sign putting, when we put the sign up, a formal ceremony on the site at some point in the future. We just don't know exactly at this point when that will be, but there will be a formal presentation. And I just also, because I'm not sure, there's more than maybe two of us that know some of the Parmenter history in the community. And tonight, we have three, I think, three generations of Parmenters here this evening. And Rick, if I might ask you to come forward and just tell the council and the community a little bit about your uncle.
What do you want now?
Just a little, just a little bit about your uncle. Please come forward to the...
I'm used to speaking in large areas, unfortunately.
By the way, Rick was a teacher at Franklin High School for many, many, many years.
I'm a little long in the tooth. Gerald was my father's twin brother, fraternal twin. And he grew up in Franklin, up at the farm on the corner of King. And the bequeathing of the land, I believe, had two reasons pushing it. One, my grandfather was very, very understanding of education. It allowed him to become a successful businessman. He went to Mass. State, Amherst. He also had a grieving wife. And that process, if you lose a child, it never goes away. So this was part of his process, I'm sure, to do that and to help Maude, his wife, you know, through the process. That's my thought. I never met Gerald, unfortunately. He passed away before I jumped into the world, but very close. Okay?
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick.
And I thank council chair and administrator for reaching out to the family as you did. That was very, very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
My family over here, and my wife Janice, my son Brian, my daughter Carolyn, and my grandson Joe. We thank you.
Welcome. And thank you, folks, very much. Okay, questions or comments from the council? Counselor Frangello.
Just to name it a little more specifically, there's obviously a lot in the deed about the original purpose of the giving of the land. Are there constraints on possible uses for the property?
Mark or Jamie?
I mean, you take it essentially as a snapshot for now. The schools have declared it surplus. It's now being put under your care, custody, and control by default, if you will. And for anything further, we'd have to come back if there were going to be another use proposed. And generally speaking, in terms of constraints in the future, if there wasn't something put in place at the time that the town initially acquired, there's a principle that says a legislative body cannot bind a future legislative body, generally speaking.
Very helpful. Yeah. When it comes to it, certainly support naming and memory. You know, we want to continue to appreciate and award such generosity to the town. That's great.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello. Anybody else? Councilor Jones?
First of all, it's great to see you here, Parmenter family. A lot of history here. I think on top of, well, first of all, I'm grateful that we're maintaining control of this piece of property. And I'm hoping, I don't know if I'm gonna be here in future councils, but I'm hoping that when the property is repurposed for future town uses, that we do queef the Parmenter name back onto the building, whatever the building may be, whether it's in other future educational purposes or any other type of municipal purposes. It's keen to keep the history alive. Because I honestly think there's nothing worse than letting history fade away. And there's a lot of history around this. And I think myself, dad, my dad being a Marine, and the Parmenter family, he believed was actually in World War II. Is that correct?
Correct.
Passed away doing service to this country. Am I correct? Did I say that?
He was a pilot.
He was a pilot.
Yeah.
Just that alone is more than enough reason to keep his name alive and forthcoming for future generations of this town, to know and understand the service that the Parmenter family did to the Town of Franklin. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Any other councilors? Councilor Plegry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to see all of you here this evening. And I'm also happy that we're going to be keeping the name. Too many times today that there are people that want to change, change, change. And I know I don't want to change anything like that. They have no idea about the Parmenter name. And maybe you could tell us a little bit about the Rhode Island Reds?
He's got it. There it is.
I'm surprised you didn't mention it. Do you want to mention? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I can boast. My grandfather's business, we were a hatchery. We hatched baby chicks.
Please come forward, Rick, so the people at home can hear you. Once again, you're gonna... Look at the exercise you're getting.
We sold baby chicks. They were brown egg-laying birds. And my grandfather perfected the Rhode Island Red strain by genetic manipulation. He was trained at college to do this. And he was good. He had the best bird in the Northeast. He pretty much controlled the market in brown egg-laying fall. He hatched over a million chicks a year. On the farm, we were a major employer. He had at one time over 50 people working. We owned four farms, three in Franklin, one in Mendon, mass acreage probably around 400 acres. We had two shifts. We're nitro. Take the hatches off. You're looking at a nitro member. More baby chicks passed through these hands over my lifetime, millions. And we shipped all over the world. We shipped to Egypt, a very big program. It was part of the HEFA project back in the 50s to get Egypt back into the economy of the world. And they had special trucks come to Franklin. We hatched everything we could in one night. I think he hatched like 60,000 in one night. Those do, hens worked hard. Hens worked hard. They did, you know. And so remember, somebody had to pick up all those eggs by hand. This is not cage time. This is free run in the world. Eventually, age took its toll on my grandfather, and he had to call it quits. So he sold the business, the genetics of the business, to a corporation in Italy, was called Agripal. They bought the line. He sent, we sent eggs and birds over there and everything. So it still is in existence in Europe, the bird, right? We also had a subsidiary in Belgium for about 15 years that sold our chicks all over Europe. Our chicks were, our chickens were good, living birds. They were strong, and they didn't bite too much. Chickens bite.
What was the, what was the number that you had on the, on King Street? At the King Street Interchange was where the Parmenter Farm?
472.
How many?
472.
400?
472, King Street.
Four, yeah, 472.
472, yeah.
How many birds?
There?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. Probably 5, 6,000. We had a big farm down on Miller Street. There was probably another 4, 5,000 there, where Hillside Nurseries is. We had a farm, we owned both sides of Spring Street. There was probably only a couple thousand birds there, plus 50 had a cattle. We also raised cattle, you know. The Mendon Farm, we had, we only used that to raise our birds. We hatched them, and they were raised over there by a resident farmer. All our farms had resident farmers on them. Their house was part of their salary. You know, those were like the old mill days. They did that, right? And just to tell you, I worked for my grandfather. Every morning, he'd get up and put a banana in his back pocket, a small pencil and a dime. He didn't take his driver's license with him, right? And he was out at 5:00 in the morning. And he'd come and get me at 6:00, even if I was asleep. And if I'd been out, maybe with somebody.
You can't blame Janice.
Kept me out late. And the family came from Sherbin, moved to Franklin in about 1912, and established the farm up in King Street, you know. So, many generations. All right, I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Before you sit, I would like to just offer an invitation to you through the museum, of which I'm a part of. We have speakers that come in and talk about old-time Franklin. And I think this would be a wonderful, wonderful venue.
I thought you were gonna put me on display.
Give a speech about, you know, the Rhode Island Reds.
I'm the true artifact.
I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-29. A two-thirds majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, Parmenters.
Good evening.
Okay, moving on. Resolution 25-30. Acceptance of Gifts. Senior Center, $40 in Recreation, $1,415. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-30. Acceptance of Gifts. Senior Center Recreation Department, whereas the Franklin Senior Center Recreation Departments have received generous donations in the amount of $1,455 to be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Senior Center, $40. Donations to be applied at the discretion of the Senior Center through the Council on Agent Gift Fund to provide services and programs, excuse me, for seniors, citizens in the Franklin community. Recreation Department, $1,415. Donations to be deposited in the Recreation Gift Account and used to help offset financial hardship requests from families that cannot afford youth programs through the Recreation Department. Donor information is included on the April 30, 2025 Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Senior Center Recreation Departments, gratefully accepts this generous donations to be used at the discretion of each department for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-30.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Again, just continue to say thank you to these folks that, and groups and organizations and businesses that continue to donate to our Senior Center Recreation, Fire Department, our Police Department, all of the many groups in town. But continue to say thank you to each and every one of them. So with that, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-30. A majority vote is required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town Administrators report.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have a bunch of small updates. First, and again, and I think in the words that Brian presented about the word "community," I guess after he said that, I looked at the rest of the agenda, and I thought, you know, think of all the amazing people that were just a part of this whole process, right? The committee appointments, the theater company, the folks that are from Franklin that are investing in our community with a great restaurant. I could listen to the Parmenter family probably all night, you know, with all those great stories. Maybe someday Jonah Parmenter will have something named after him, who knows? But I don't know, I just think as Brian said that, it was reflecting on me throughout the agenda, just about the incredible people here. We hear a lot of negativity all day, and it's very refreshing and rewarding to sit here at these meetings and just be able to see all the great people that come through these council agendas. First on the item, I just want to congratulate Amy, right next to me. She is the latest addition. She is now an official member of the Downtown Partnership Board of Directors. Super excited for Amy, and we're looking forward to her leadership on the board. She is formally taking the seat that Brian held, so we're looking forward to that. I want to congratulate the Downtown Partnership on an incredible program this last weekend on the Ladybug Trail. And just want to thank Rep. Roy for the Two Lights for Tomorrow. I know all of us, at some point, were part of his picture tour, but it was really cool and honoring the 250th anniversary a couple weekends ago. And then beyond the general updates on the agenda, there's a couple of updates. One I put on here, the Town Administrator's Budget was just released on April 18. For folks that haven't been able to look at it or weren't aware, you can go right on our website, go right to the Town Budget Page. Everything you could possibly have wanted to know and more, and then some, is all right there. We've captured in a chronological order all of the materials from the Joint Budget Subcommittee when we started this process in September. And I understand that the budget materials are long, but they're all keyword searchable. I want to give a huge shout-out to our CFO, Carrie Bertoni, our Deputy CFO and Budget Director, Evan Cass, Linda Darling, Karen Brattery, Char Director, Amy, Julie and Jared, both in my office. I think the budget has taken another huge step forward. For the first time in 10 years, I really didn't do a lot of the work. And it is extremely awesome that the team around here picked that document up and brought it to even a whole nother level. For the first time in ten years, I really didn't do a lot of the work, and it is extremely awesome that the team around here picked that document up and brought it to even a whole nother level. I would also say that if a lot of people have questions about the budget, as George Conley eloquently said this week, the answers are in there. It might take a few minutes. You can kind of search around. There are a lot of documents, but people ask about historical data to me all the time. They ask about the line item by line item summaries. All of those materials are right online, line item by line item. All the historical data is all there. If people have questions, obviously Amy, myself, I know all of you are available, and all of the rest of the finance staff are available. Just give us a quick phone call or an email, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the FY twenty-six budget proposal. As some of you know, right now, the Finance Committee is in the middle of their budget hearings. We had our hearing start on just Monday and yesterday, and we will, the Finance Committee will be wrapping up its analysis on the budget tomorrow night. Tomorrow night will be a longer meeting. It's a majority of everybody in the departments. We've already gone through public education, public safety, DPW, and inspections. And tomorrow night will be general government, human services, social services, the Senior Center, library, recreation, all of those departments. We'll be wrapping that up tomorrow night. I want to note that, of course, on May twenty-first and twenty-second, the Legally Advertised Council budget hearings are still there. But as I've put in the Finance Committee notes, and it came up quickly last night, it'll come up tomorrow night. You know, while it's not official, because y'all have to vote to open hearing and continue it, you know, our recommendation, Amy and I are suggesting that, given the override vote on June third, we want to still have the Legally Advertised hearings to get public feedback, but certainly continuing that second hearing to the June fourth council meeting, which is the night after the override, is, is in the best interest of everyone. And so we're going to recommend at the budget hearings to continue that second hearing to June fourth. Before I get to other previous requests, I would just stop there to see if there are any questions that you've heard from the community that we can answer tonight. If not, I'm happy to move on to the other two issues. It is a posted item, so if there are questions, I'm happy to get them.
Any questions? Counselor Plaguey.
Just to comment, that this budget that we're presenting shows, projects that the override has passed, the numbers that are in there. Just so the people understand that, because I've heard from a couple that say, well, gee whiz, we've already got all of this thing. I said, that's projected if the override passes. I just want to make sure I'm saying it.
You are one hundred percent correct, Counselor Plaguey, and it, it states that what you just said is like the first paragraph of the executive summary. So for anybody that does have those questions, the first like five or six pages probably summarize it all as best they can, and that note is right in there. But you're right, that is exactly, that is exactly correct. And any other que, sorry, any other questions or points? And then I added on here previous requests, because a couple of quests came up at the last meeting. So three hundred Fisher Street, very dormant right now. We had, there was a lot of activity. There was actually, they were, they were making significantly great progress before the pandemic. They'd actually removed a ton of soil and earth from that area. They were doing an amazing job cleaning up that site at a very, very fast pace, and then the pandemic hit. And then the EPA saw some staff changes. They did continue on the work a little bit for a few years, but unfortunately, there was a couple of staff changes. I did talk to the EPA last fall, last summer. They were anticipating with some staffing changes, a public hearing and a public participation process, but that has been significantly delayed due to the staffing issues at the EPA. That was before the recent news down in DC of the administration and Congress proposing some pretty widespread cuts to the EPA. I think for all intents and purposes right now, until we hear further notice, my guess is that project is, is completely on pause. And I have not heard from anybody from the EPA for almost a year. So I think with everything going on in DC and the proposed cuts to the agency, my guess is, is that that project will be on hold for quite some time until further notice. So, and then the Chestnut Street Apartments, the ones that are down that are already built from the outside. It's been vacant for about three years. The owner still owns the building, but there are no plans that we're aware of. You see the outside and you think it's done, but if you walk inside, there's nothing done. So on the exterior, it looks like it can be rented, but nothing is done on the inside. So the entire interior has no development at all. The units have not been outfitted whatsoever, and that building is basically going to sit there like that until the owner of the building, who may have, I don't know this for sure, could have had some financial issues or could have moved on to other projects for whatever reasons. But that project, that project is going to sit there. The number one question I think you guys get, or you get, and I get, is there are two deeded apartments in there, or units in there, I should say, for veterans. But just so folks know, there's no anticipated end date to that project. And so that project, that deed will stay there, so that someday, if that project does get done, those units will still be deeded for two local veteran families. But we don't see any, we don't see any, we don't see any signs or any clues from the staff that there's going to be any movement on that building.
That was, that was a question that I had gotten, is if it gets sold, or if and when something is done there, do those units stay veterans units?
They do stay there, and, you know, I would guess, you know, I think even though I, I didn't sound very hopeful of any movement, you know, you do have a reasonably built, well-built building right now. For somebody that's looking to take that, take that shot, and they're looking to get in the game of housing development, that might be a building that could be an easy fit up and a building that actually could get on the market at some point. Those are also affordable units, by the way. Hope that gives answers to the questions from the previous.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselor Jones?
Just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through to Jamie. Since the building remains unfitted, or not outfitted inside of the building, would this building fall under our current vacant property law? Or has it had to register with, is, is it, is I, is the exterior considered secured?
Yeah, it wouldn't fall under the vacant property because it's never been inhabited. So the vacant property law really deals with habited parcels that then are not inhabited, that then fall into disrepair or whatever word you want to use. So it's still, you know, the gentleman that was there was doing construction, or the owner of the building was doing it, you know, two, three years ago. So we're not really sure exactly what happened, but, you know, we'll keep our eyes on it as we move forward and see if there's any clues, and we'll give the council any update that may come forward. And then one last thing, kind of a little bit of a public service announcement, Mr. Chairman. You know, it has come to my attention over the last couple of weeks that there is a, I'm getting it almost seemingly multiple times a day. One of the things that's positive in this is people are touching base with me. They're calling Amy, they're calling the staff, they're calling, I know, all of you. I know with the Stobarts Project and the override and a lot of other decisions in town that people have some passionate views on, there is a tremendous amount of, I wouldn't say just misinformation, because people have a right to have their own opinions. And if we disagree on opinions, that's fine, but there's been a very big uptick that's come to my attention of, of some very serious allegations, I think, from people that are putting things out there on particularly Facebook and social media. My message to everybody is, that may be watching, is please, like, like a phone, a spam call on your phone or a scam maybe in your mail or your email, just be cautious of what you're reading. And if you're curious about what you're reading, reach out to one of the counselors, reach out to one of the other elected officials, reach out to the staff. I've had a lot of people calling me in the last week, usually doesn't, people don't call, to kind of ask me, is this true? Or I'm reading this here, is this okay? And I'll give a couple of quick examples. There was an allegation that came to my attention that the Stobarts developer was the brother of someone that's on an elected board. That is not true. I've gotten comments about the petition on Stobarts. It is not a thousand Franklin residents that signed that. Most of the people on that petition do not live here. They've never put their address, and they're from other states. There are some people on that petition who are from Franklin for sure. But I think the idea that a thousand people from Franklin sign this petition and are opposing the project is not true. And I just had one today come in to me where someone wrote to us based off something they saw on social media that said the town is, has a ten million dollar budget deficit and alleging that the override or the budget deficit was far bigger than what, than what is true. And I say this as a bit of a just cautionary tale to people who are online, reading things on those blogs. It's not that all the information is inaccurate or misleading. And some people may just not know the answer, and they're just chiming in on their opinions. But with a lot of big decisions coming up, not just the override and Stobarts, but also many other things we're doing through the rest of the year, it's just a little bit of a cautionary tale, kind of a buyer beware to folks, to be on alert a little bit of the information you're reading. There are people who are intentionally misleading and are intentionally at making allegations of ethical impropriety or, you know, conflicts of interest or other things that are far from the truth. And we just encourage anybody who's hearing this to give us all a call, give all you a call, just touch base with us. Talked to a gentleman today who was extraordinarily upset about something he read online. He was eighty-two years old. He called up, talked for five minutes, and by the end of the phone call, he told me that he felt so much better because what he had read was, was very worrisome to him. He had just moved here actually a few years ago, and he's not completely familiar with the community, but he read something, and it made him very upset, and he called up, and he felt a lot better after that. And I think that speaks to what we've all talked about, about in-person contact. Pick up the phone. I know it's old. I know it's antiquated or whatever. No one wants to get on the phone, but, you know, five minutes with this gentleman, and him and his wife felt so much better, and they were relieved. And I know Julie and Jared and Amy and a couple of times Mark and many others have stopped in and asked about these things, so. I'll end there, Mr. Chairman. I know there may be some other comments on this, but I just wanted to make people aware as we're going through these, these difficult decisions as a community to just be a little cautious of some of the stuff that everybody, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving on. Subcommittee reports, and I don't believe any subcommittee have met other than me, Gatrak? No? Okay. I don't believe any have met since our last council meeting. So we'll go to future agenda items. Counselor Jones?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Hamblin?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Frangello?
Nothing.
Counselor Sheridan?
Nothing.
Counselor Plaguey?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Okay, we'll go to counselor comments, and we'll go to, who hasn't gone first in a while? Counselor Frangello?
Just two today.
We're all like, what?
Yeah, who's first?
Really, just two today. One is, you know, we didn't get a chance to add some comments to Brian's recognition, but very, very well-deserved recognition. There are employees that show up and do their job very well, and we are very appreciative of them. And then there are employees that are the first people at downtown Franklin for any event, single-handedly moving things in and out of their van, and the last person to leave at such events, you know, keeping the cultural district committee moving when energy was low and all the other ways that Brian quietly committed himself above and beyond the position requirements for the, for the betterment of Franklin. So well, well-deserved recognition and certainly well-deserved retirement. Only other thing I would, I would name is, yeah, come join us, ten AM. We're going to meet at the Depot Street parking lot. This is the Jane Jacobs Walk. She's a social activist. They do these Jane's walks around the world. This is my third year hosting this with Steve, and it's now being, you know, organized and hosted by Building Equitable Neighborhoods, Ben from Franklin. We, we get to meet our neighbors and reflect on development patterns and changes and, and how zoning impacts the way that we move and relate to our community. So it's a really good and productive event, so hope to see some folks there. Ten AM, Depot Street Parking Lot. And we, we walk for about a mile. Paws are welcome, wheels are welcome, and you're welcome to peel off at your own time.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, where do I start? Certainly congratulations to Brian on his well-deserved retirement. Congratulations to our two police officers that were recognized tonight. How fantastic it is to see a female police officer taking on that role. Congratulations as a theater kid to see that group of students and what they were able to accomplish and truly what they rose above in a difficult year and what their parents and the advisor rose above. Truly remarkable, so congratulations to all of them. I want to echo to Jamie's comment, the online chatter, even though it has slowed down a little, many of the comments made by a lot of people are truly uncalled for. They're hurtful, they're not truthful. Some might even be considered slanderous when people start to make accusations like people are saying about all of us that just aren't true. So I commend the staff for responding to all of the emails, for taking the time to talk to people, and I hope that the public will continue to perhaps not listen to a lot of that noise and just reach out to us and to staff when they have questions. People can certainly voice their opinions, like you said, Jamie, but an awful lot of stuff that I'm reading just isn't based in fact. And unfortunately, before it gets down and hits hundreds, if not thousands, of people that actually think it's true, and that just hurts everyone. I got the benefit of attending the Senior Center Volunteer Event today, which was really nice to see. We recognized a hundred and twenty-nine volunteers at the Senior Center, not even counting those that are on the work-off program. Those seniors helping in a variety of jobs represented ten thousand one hundred and sixty hours of community service in just a year. And Sarah put a dollar figure on that of just over four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that that would have cost us if we had to staff those programs or staff those positions. So thank you to everybody that continues to volunteer at the center and, and give your most valuable thing, which is your time. And I will leave with, I, I'm lucky enough in my line of work to get called by people that, you know, perhaps want to call Franklin home. And I got a call from a couple living in Quincy, and they said, we've identified Franklin as a place where we want to come. We're adopting our first child, and we've heard such great things about your town. And I said, oh, okay, well, you know, where would you, where would you like to see? What would you like to know? They've never been here before. Never. They simply were told by a variety of people from family, friends, coworkers, doing their online research, that we were the place to be. So I met them on Saturday. We went to La Quintina. We had pizza. We had a couple of drinks. I hopped in the car with them. I drove them all over town for three hours, went to the Common. We talked about the library. We talked about the schools. We talked neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood, and they said, you know, what a beautiful town you have, and we can't wait to move here and raise a family here. We have to remember that. We have to remember that all the time. When all this negative stuff continues to come up, we, and we talked about it so much tonight. We have a great town. We have great people. We have a lot to be proud of, and people do want to continue to come here, so let's not let them down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the police officers who were here, especially Frankie, I always love saving my girl, and the high school theater group, that was amazing, and of course, Brian. And we've, I worked with him for eight years and probably drove him up a wall. And I demanded a lot from him, and I want to thank him personally for all, all of the time he spent with me. So I've been reading this book. It's called Who Is Government? It's edited by Michael Lewis, the famous Moneyball author. And what's in here are stories. They're stories of humble, hard-working, brilliant people who tirelessly serve this country by solving problems, making sure antitrust laws are followed, making sure coal mine roofs are less likely to collapse. roofs are less likely to collapse, making the National Cemetery Administration the best-run organization, public or private, in the country, and creating an app to connect doctors to information that can save people from deadly rare diseases that no pharmaceutical company will research. And there's a few more in there. So I suggest you all, like, take, take a look at this. These people who are maligned and misrepresented, well, but you know what? First of all, I think maybe Brian could be in this, in this too. But there, and when we talk about what's going on in the world and what's going on on our social media, you know, people just don't understand, they misunderstand what's going on and what government does. They're performing everyday essential tasks that keep the country running and you and me alive, working way more hours a day than they get paid for. And who could make more money outside of government? But they love and live to serve. And while these stories are about our federal employees, I believe the same could be said about municipal employees, especially those that work for us. Right? It's the people. And we are so lucky that they do. They are loyal, tireless, and humble, working way more hours than they get paid for because they love to work for us. It's pretty cool. I would like to highlight one of the projects that we have asked the staff to accomplish for us, among many, many others. It's the fiscal year 2026 override information section of the website. When we ask for, if people want to go look up their own, do their own research, don't do it on Facebook. Look at the web, town website and look there and you will find all the details that's, if that's what you want, or there's even a one-pager for those of you who just want the elevator pitch, top-level data. All the links to the listening sessions, for those of you who haven't watched them yet are there or you need to get reminded, they're there. And if you scroll, this is my favorite part, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom, you'll find the FAQs, the frequently asked questions. And so far, there are 40 of them that have answers. So take a look at them and if your question isn't answered, there is a field that you can write your own question right there. So our dedicated staff will be happy to answer them. There's a lot of information there. So read away, ask away, and be glad that we have such a dedicated team. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Last night, Jamie mentioned something and I looked it up today. Milton had an override vote yesterday. And if anyone's wondering, it was for a lot of money, nine and a half million dollars. And it passed. I didn't see the percentage. Do you know that?
62.38.
Wow.
62.38.
And they were against the MBTA stuff too, so. Okay, that's a little positive. So that passed. And just to continue that theme a little bit, I think Nancy DiNella did a great job expressing to people that she is getting out the information. I know some people have been concerned, how are they going to know? But there's plenty of, there's plenty of ways to know. People are going to know about this election and it's 30-something days away. So, and I appreciate Counselor Hamblin talking about the budget because that was my last thing to, you said it very eloquently. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Sheridan?
Yeah, second everything that you said. Congratulations to Brian, police, the theater, and I agree with what you already said. But also, I've been looking at brown eggs. And remember the ad in New England, Egg Council?
Fresh, fresh eggs are local eggs and local.
Brown eggs.
Brown eggs are local eggs and local eggs are fresh.
Yeah. So I think we should do something about that, if not at the museum when we put up the plaque. Tell them about the family that.
You want to sing the song?
No. They bet the brown eggs there. That's kind of a big deal.
Mr. Roanoke?
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, again, a big congratulations to Sergeant Godino and to our new court prosecutor, Detective Tara Agoa. That's awesome. I, of course, have to bring back the Franklin High School Theater Company. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to read them that proclamation. One of the things I didn't get to say during the proclamation was how great the show was. The, the Yellow Boat was an, was an amazing performance. I hadn't known of the story prior to seeing the play, but let's just say I was, for lack of a better term, a little accl态 at the time. It was, it was, it was somewhat disturbing, but yet sad and yet a really good story because the story was about a, a young boy who contracted AIDS through a transfusion and ended up dying at a young age. And his dad's memory had put together this play in the memory of him. Yellow Boat was something he had drawn and that was in memory of him. Very, very well done. The performances were remarkable. On other notes, excuse me, of course, Brian, I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to talk about Brian Taberner. When I first joined this council back in 2009, one of the first people I met besides Jeff Nutting was Brian Taberner. Brian, I, I, I can't think of many people in my tenure who, and it's funny because a lot of our discussion has been about facts. The facts and nothing but the facts. And that's all Brian has ever been. If you had a question and you wanted to know something, he was your go-to guy. He wouldn't sugarcoat it. He wouldn't color it anything other than what it is. He would just tell you like it is. Facts and nothing but the facts. And the guy had a, has a tremendous amount of information and working knowledge in his head. And I can't even begin to state how much of a loss that's going to be for us and the community at large. He made such a huge impact in that department and I'm going to miss him. But congratulations on his retirement. Just a quick note, vote yes on June 3rd for the override. I actually took the train yesterday. My daughter's car needed repairs, so I, I was kind enough to get it repaired and drop it off to her in Austin. And to save her the gas and to save the trouble of bringing me back to Franklin, I took the commuter rail home yesterday. And it's funny because I bumped into a friend who, my neighbor, she goes, oh, you caught the train when it was actually not broken down. I'm like, oh, interesting. So anyways, long story short, I got off at the train at Franklin Station on our brand-new handicap ramp. That was so cool. And I know a lot of people have been talking about that, but that is a great addition to the Dean stuff, having that, that handicap ramp. I know several people are happy about that. Also, Jamie, I think you'd get a kick out of this one. One of the things I think I've mentioned before, well, first off, Sunday, I was outside cleaning my car because it, I was, I was, it needed a little bit of dusting. And somebody turned the corner, saw me standing there cleaning my car, like, gave me that wave, like, hey, how you doing, buddy? They cut out both of them, pull over, get out of their car, walk up to me and start soliciting something. And he had a little logo on his shirt that was a solar panel company. I recognized the name. And he starts in, in on his little, hey, how are you, how's things, trying to solicit work. And I'm like, boy, you picked the wrong person to ask that question to. So what do you think the first question out of my mouth was? Where's your permit? Yep. And he says, oh, it's at the police department. I'm like, great, you can go get your permit and come back and show me your permit. In the meantime, have a nice day. Please don't go around the neighborhood scaring my neighbors and knocking on their doors. So. But that's, you know, they're, they're doing it and I just kind of wanted to stress it while I had the mic, not just to my fellow councils, but to the neighbors. People are supposed to be permitted to solicit the neighborhoods. And I think it's no later than 8:00 PM, or is it 7:00 PM, that they can solicit to?
That's a good question. The police department handles all of that.
Yep. But I, I, I can understand how that can be a little spooky where people walking around knocking on doors and soliciting. It's in this time, in this day and age, people should, they should be doing that, in my opinion. And they should have their display, they should have their permits displayed. They should have some badge, identifications. They shouldn't just be randomly walking around. That's, that's about it.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Plegory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that it's only religious organizations that don't need a permit. Isn't that correct, Nana? That's how it always was.
Politicians too.
If it's, if it's commercial activity requires a permit, if it's advocacy, non-whatever, they, they have a right to do it without even a permit.
Politicians can do it.
Commercial, they can't. If they're trying to sell something, they can't.
Okay. But religious people do not need.
Right.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be in peace.
Brian, I remember him when he first started. We were, I was clerk at the time and from day one, he was just a gentleman. He was a very nice man to work with. The only thing is he used to pile things up on his desk. Made me so nervous. I'd go in and ask him for something or whatever. He knew where it was though. And Mr. Fitzgerald, that was DPW director, his was not only on his desk, but it was all over the floor too. And he could find what he needed. Do you remember him? And his, the way his office was? Well, I wish Brian only the best and I'm sorry that his retirement now is bringing some problems for him and having lost his wife and now his, his illness. So our prayers are with him. I'd like to thank all the volunteers. I wasn't able to make it yesterday, but we do. As you had said, we have so many volunteers that sometimes we have more than we even need. I know lately up at the museum, we've had a few people that are down on a schedule and they'll just come in because they want to. And I think that's great. Talking about the museum, we had our appraisal day on Sunday and Jim Johnson was there. And we made twice as much as we did the last time. We had more people. We just had a great day, great, great day. And in fact, one person, as they would come out and I checked them in and all, but when on their way out, I'd say to them, and how did you do? Were you a millionaire? And this one guy said to me, no, but I'm $4,500 more than I thought. I bought this at a yard sale for $35. So. And then a couple of other people said the same thing, one at a club, someone else said whatever. But Jimmy, he's just a wealth of knowledge. He really is. Oh, I don't know. I don't know. Let's see. The light near St. Mary's Church has been out now for two weeks.
Okay.
It isn't all the lights at the intersection, but if you come down Pleasant Street, the light right there, focused to the church, the green light doesn't work.
Oh, the traffic lights?
Traffic light, I'm sorry. Yeah.
That's a good flag. I meant to name them.
The what?
I noticed that too, yeah.
Yeah. And it's been two weeks now, so I thought it was time to mention it. Let's see, volunteers, the light, the appraisal, and a thank you. I love the new shades in here. They are wonderful. Those other ones that were hanging and uneven and glad they're gone. I'm glad they're gone.
So are we.
Just for you, Counselor Plegory.
Good. You know what? The squeaky wheel gets us done. But these look great. They really do. And we could see the sunset tonight.
Yeah.
Imagine? Did you notice that?
I did, I did.
It was so nice. It was so nice. My only suggestion now is let's get some pictures in the building and through here because it's blah with all the gray. It needs something broken up, okay? Thank you.
In due time this year, the, a lot of those things will be happening for sure. Absolutely. We've been digging at the museum and we've, we've got some good ideas.
If that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegory. I think I get everyone. Just a couple of things. Obviously, congratulations to our, to our two police people that came in this evening and were promoted. As well, I can't thank Brian Taberner for his many years of dedicated service to our community and he certainly will be missed. And I want to just thank the Franklin Theater, High School Theater Group for coming in this evening. It's always great to have these kids come in for the different, different projects that they have going on in the schools and not just go to the school committee, but come into the council as well. And I'd like to thank the power mentors. Having three generations of power mentors come in this evening was, was really nice and Rick was very, very accommodating when I called him to sit and meet. And I was fortunate enough to go to school, a very good, with his younger brother who was a classmate of my wife and I's, many, many years ago, almost as many as Counselor Plegory, but.
Is that 11?
Okay. Did you have something?
Yes, I have one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I had opened my mail just before I came tonight and through the county of the Registry of Deeds, we got our papers, so you'll all have it when you get home, I'm sure.
200,000 ballots.
Franklin took in, let's see, how much did we pay? If we had not voted this CPA, that would have been lost. It would have been divided to other towns. And I wish I had thought to, well, people are still listening, I'm sure, but it was so important that that was voted on because that money is very important to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I guess lastly, you know, I just, like many communities across the Commonwealth, Franklin's facing increasing costs due to inflation, aging infrastructure, and growing service demands. The annual budget constrained by Proposition Two and a Half limits can no longer fully support the services that residents rely on every day. Without an override, our town will be forced to make painful cuts to essential services. Fewer police officers and firefighters, loss of the third ambulance, reduced snow removal and road maintenance, deferred building repairs, and diminished educational resources for our children. These are not enhancements. They, they are core services that keep our community safe, functional, and thriving. A successful override will allow us to maintain safe and timely emergency response by police and fire departments, clean and passable roads, and reliable public work operations, adequate maintenance of public buildings and facilities, and a high-quality education for all our students in our public schools. I believe that protecting these services is not only responsible but essential to preserving the quality of life we value in our town. The cost of doing nothing will be far greater in the long run. I urge all residents to learn more about the override proposal, attend public meetings, and vote in favor of this critical investment in our community's future. Thank you, and I will, at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is that a vote?
Non-divviable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.